Call our Jackson County Commission a meeting work session for November twenty-second, twenty-first to order. We will have our invitation, or I'm sorry, have a roll call.
District one, Mr. Dubby.
Present.
District two, Mr. Babel.
Present.
District three, Ms. Gilbert.
Present.
District four, Mr. Sisk.
Present.
Chairman also present.
And we have a board of presidents. We'll have our invocation by Mr. Porter and our pledge by Mr. Babel.
Father of heaven, we're truly blessed to be here. We're so thankful in this period of Thanksgiving for all the blessings you bestow upon us, each and every one of us, and as a community, we're thankful to be Americans, we're thankful to be Alabamians, we're thankful to live in this county. We pray you'll continue to watch over us, watch over these commissioners as they deliberate, guide us and direct us every day in Christ's name.
Amen.
For your ladies. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item is approval of the agenda. We have one meeting item to be voted on, and then we have ten work session items for discussion. Do we have any changes before we proceed? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion in a second.
Second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say no. Okay, but no one signed up to speak? Anyone like to speak? No, please. In the public comments, so we'll move on to the first item for the meeting. And this is a motion to accept the hiring recommendation for the probate clerk position. You have a copy of the recommendation in your packets. We had previously had the recommendation approved, however, those two individuals did not work out. So this is a recommendation for the two vacancies that are remaining for those probate positions. So any questions or comments? Have a motion to approve the recommendation?
What does this command there? This command, I don't know, I'm new at this here now. What does this office consist of here?
The probate office?
I know what it consists of, but I mean, have these jobs been been filled?
Okay, yeah, so we have, these are vacancies that are within the current organizational structure. We have, I believe, one, two, three, five positions in that office. So these are two of those five positions that have been left vacated because people have left or transferred to another department.
Are these retirees that have retired?
No, these two, these two in particular, we had one person that left, just left the service of the county and another person that transferred to another department.
So we feel there's a need for these people?
Yes, I feel it is, the probate judge feels there is. Five is a very minimal staff to have in that office. I don't know that they could do it with anything less. Now, if you look at any fewer people-
Didn't they have seven when we came in?
Yeah, we've reduced that, reduced the number of people there by those two since we've been in. This is to just maintain the current level of staffing.
Well, my reason I questioned that, 'cause I knew that, you know, all I've heard was funding, and I thought if we, if we went without these right here, you know, why is it still necessary? We've got to replace them.
Correct.
That was my question.
Yeah, this won't, this, these dollars are within the budgeted dollars, so there's no additional dollars that this takes, puts in place. And I would say in general, across the county, we're pretty well as far as our, the personnel is concerned, we're about where we can be as far as the lowest level of personnel we can have. A lot of places we need additional help. But in this particular case, this is not anything additional, this is just maintaining the current staffing. Any other questions?
And these are in-house transfers?
One of these is an in-house transfer from another department, which will open a position in that department, and the other one is a new hire from someone that's not with the county.
So these aren't going to be paid for through the commission, so it's through the county, not through the property office?
Right, all the, and we'll discuss more tomorrow, the budget meeting, and how that works, but yes, pretty much all, he does take the one part-time person out of his own funds that he has, through a copy fee that he has. These are, these are on the commission, or on the budget that we approved immediately. Any other questions or comments? Okay, do we have a motion to approve this item?
No, no motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay, is any other questions or comments on this? And again, tomorrow morning, we will have a much more in-depth view of the budget and everything, so better understand some of those, and then even this, to help understand this and then other things that we'll have coming up. I think there's a few other things on the agenda we won't vote on tonight, but help you understand that a little bit better, so. Motion in a second, all in favor say aye. As opposed, say no.
No.
Ms. Gilbert, have a few questions. Okay. So that concludes the items for our meeting portion. We'll move on to the work session, and the first item is regarding the cell phone policy. Now, you have a copy of the draft cell phone policy. This was brought up as a way to reduce some of the county expenses and give employees the option, as opposed to the commission paying for a cell phone for the individual, for a county cell phone, we would give them a monthly supplement to cover the cost of that cell phone. Do you think that this allows for, does this satisfy the amount, Mr. Porter?
It does not. It says that the commission will set that amount, and also the commission will determine what positions are available for that.
Right, so this would be something, we would set the amount for that benefit. The purpose of this would be to save dollars, so I think we would want to set that to an amount that we would see would save dollars for the county. I think right now, the cost for a cell phone for an individual range is anywhere from around fifty to seventy-five dollars. And I know that one recommendation for this would be twenty-five dollars for this benefit. So again, we would offer that in lieu of having a county cell phone, and this would give employees the option to choose whether to have the county cell phone. Again, those that require or need one, give them the option to choose either county cell phones or to take this supplement. I think one issue was brought up, a question as to some liability issues, and we could put something together for any employees that choose to take this supplement.
If the commission decides to do this, then I'd recommend that you have a, basically an acknowledgement that you would sign, to say that they understand that their cell phones can be attached, they can be subpoenaed because they'll have county information on it. One other concern I've got, and that has to do with security, and I don't know nothing about it to say, really, but I just would be concerned that we put the appropriate, whatever you do to these machines, make sure that nobody can get to the county information through these cell phones. So I don't know what you do to-
That question was brought up in previous discussion, and all the information that would be on those phones would be stuff that you could access already on, you know, by the internet.
Right, but my concern would be that somebody could hack a cell phone and thereby, somehow, I don't know how you do it, to get into the county information through that, and that, as long as there's-
I think that's what I asked, according to Mr. Arnold, that couldn't happen, because the only thing they could do on their phone would be no different than anybody else that could go look at that county courthouse. I have the same concern, but it's good.
Yeah, if they, if we do find ourselves in a position where there's information that doesn't need to be compromised, I think we'd require a particular cell phone.
Sure, sure.
So we may need to add that in here, I don't know that we'd ever, but it wouldn't hurt to have some type of clause like that, that if the county could require you to have a county phone, as opposed to take this under certain circumstances.
So this is something new, it hasn't been on?
Right, right, no, we haven't, I think we've discussed this once before in work session, and then we got the draft together for consideration, and we can discuss and go from there.
Who do we currently provide funds for?
First, there's a mapper in that department, and they're in the field looking at piece of property or something, and they're already using their personal cell phones a lot, because the county's phones are not smartphones or whatever, you know, they're getting, looking at parcels or planning, or just planning that they're doing a break.
We have several departments, Public Works, Revenue Office, the sheriffs would be a little bit different, but if they chose to do this, we'd work with them on that process as well. I think probate has a couple. Those are the ones that come to my mind. And all our department heads, I think, have the, our supervisors, right?
Our supervisors and leads, as well as our herbicide tech and our son tech, they're both, all, they're, those are one man operations that are out, and then our lead positions and our supervisor positions, those are supposed to be the best of the game.
I say all of our departments, not all of them, but those four departments have the top.
Have you inquired with your people whether or not they were interested in doing this and stuff?
I haven't. One thing that I think we talked about a little bit, the actual phone, you know, being a smartphone, so if we get into, if, I'm speaking on our department now, if we get on this allowance for them, for their phones, you know, one reason we provide the phone is not only for the communication, but for the future capabilities, for their internet access capabilities, you know, doing the location services, taking a picture for reference and future discussion allowance. So if a person chooses to have a phone that won't meet those standards, and then take the supplement, that's kind of the issue there.
We can put that in here.
So they basically don't have their personal phone, this phone too, except unless they take the supplement?
Yeah, currently, that's what a lot of folks have, they have their personal phone and a county phone. So this would give the option for them to choose a supplement, as opposed to having that county phone, again, saving us dollars because we're not paying for a phone line, we're just giving them that supplement.
So we don't really have no, really a figure of what this would run?
No, we'll get, we can get together the total number of folks, we, again, it's based on what we choose for the supplement, and the ranges, again, the range varies as far as what the cost is per cell phone, like I said, somewhere, I believe, from fifty, seventy-five off in front of that. And then, of course, giving them the option, I think, that's the key thing, if the cost is more than anyone chooses, obviously, it's something that involves one participant.
But this is not looking at increasing anyone having a phone, it's actually looking at just a decrease there?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
Yeah, we're not going to look at giving anyone new a phone, this is only going to create a decrease for us.
So this came up with the revenue office, there are individuals in the revenue office that don't currently have a cell phone. The revenue commissioner came to us to provide cell phones for that office because of the new software that they have to have, and again, they're needing smartphones. So this was what was brought up as an alternative. So there are a few individuals that will be, they've been waiting to get their phones because they've been seeing if we're going to adopt a policy like this instead.
For the most part, it's just, it's going to save us money, I think.
A lot of people don't want to carry two phones, too. All that.
What we like, what I like to do, so we can have some further thought on this, we want to put this on the work session in December for final discussion, and then we can move forward and we feel from there.
Yes, that would be great.
So we'll place this on the December fifth work session. Okay, the next item is regarding hiring policy, this is also something that had been discussed in the past. The problem that we're running into right now is that because the commission passed a mega-provision for all resignations, promotions, advertising, and things like that, it's bogging us down with the number of employees we have leave, have, we have had leaving over the past several months. So with that, this attempt to correct that, again, this is based on some discussions we had further, and we can modify this if we feel necessary. Basically, what this policy presents is that the authority would be given to the administration, the chairman, and department heads as far as any processes that do not include total hiring or firing. So for any hiring, would have to be final approval by the commission, as well as any firing that would lead to personnel action.
Right, which could be either termination or leave without pay, something that would trigger the due process provisions.
So in those instances, it would be, it would still be necessary that the commission, which at, basically at the end of all our processes, the commission would still have to vote to have final approval on whatever, whatever took place. Again, this is an attempt to streamline our process for the hiring portion, because we've had so many, we have to wait for the commission right now before we can even accept a resignation, advertise, and then we've got two weeks of advertisement, and then we've got to do the interviews, and then come back to the commission for final approval. So with this, when we receive a resignation, we can accept that resignation immediately, move forward with the advertising process, opening that in advertising, and then bring that to the commission much sooner for final approval.
And all those things within the structure, framework of our organizational chart?
Yes, that specifies at these positions, I believe, specifies in here somewhere that it would be within positions that are currently available, not, we couldn't go out and just say we need an extra HMT one and go start, start the process for that, it'd have to be through a position that has been vacated in the current organizational chart. And is that one specifically, I remember seeing?
I don't think so.
Okay, so we do need to clarify that if we can. Okay, do we want to place this on next Monday's agenda for, to move forward, or do we want to place this on a work session for?
I'm sure we'll move forward.
Can we get that changed, I didn't think it sent out?
And you just want it limited to the current positions that are in the organizational chart?
Yes, yeah, the approved organizational chart, we did approve an organizational chart for every department, so if that's ever the change, it has to be done by the commission for adding a position or removing a position. Any other questions or comments? Okay, if we have no position, then we can place this on the meeting for the twenty-eighth for further discussion and determine how we want to move forward. Okay, the next item is regarding national parks campaign. This is a letter that was provided to us by a member of the Chamber of Commerce regarding funding for a national park system. This is something, I'd just like everybody to review and see if this is something we want to move forward with. It's basically supporting funding and changing policy, but I think for us to support that, I think everybody would need to be on board with supporting that policy. So if you would take a look at that and review that, we can place that on the December work session for any other questions, and see if that's something that you think would be worth a lot to support, to support as a commissioner. Okay, next item is regarding our property insurance. We have two items in here for the cost of our property insurance, and I'll let Mr. Manning kind of share, can you kind of share what the ACCA, how that whole process is working with you?
Should have two proposals in there, one for ACCA, one for Harding, and it's where we got quotes on the exact same, all the properties that the commission, Jackson County Commission holds, and the insurers. ACCA is administered through the Association of County Commissions, and we've been with them for, I know, I've been here about three years, we were using them before I came, so I guess most counties do use this program. It's sort of usually, when you compare them, it's better rates, and sometimes it's a little bit better coverage, they're a little comprehensive on some things. And the quote, the dwelling, or all the different locations are listed on the ACCA sheet. And we got, we looked at that for Harding, and they have the exact same locations, because we wanted to make sure that both entities had the exact same information to give us our quotes on. So we've got the two quotes there, basically ensuring identical coverages. And as you can see, the quote for ACCA is fifty-three, five, forty-eight. And you see the quote for the other, Harding is fifty-eight, nine, thirty-one.
I'm wondering if I put note here on the coverage increased by?
They're talking about the total, when you go through, look, the properties, some of the buildings went up in value, some of them stayed the same.
Increased in both.
Yeah, just a footnote, that the total coverage for that year. And then, I guess last year, we did actually go through all of our facilities and make sure that some of the ones that had been insured previously were at the right amount. So we-
And ACCA had the same amount?
Yes.
Same value?
Yeah, they're above. And what we did, basically, we just sent the listing of all the properties and their classifications down to ACCA. Now, they're, this is a program they're starting, or they, they have started really promoting this year. Harding is, I believe I said we've been with ACCA, but we've actually been with Harding for a property since I've been here, I don't know that, prior to that, how many years we've used him. But ACCA, they're starting this program, and what they're telling the counties is going to be similar to the workers' comp program, where they get all the counties involved in it, and they're able to drive much better rates for the counties. So this is their first year on quoting the property, and they're going, they handle all of the county's inland marine policies and all of the vehicles also. And one of the stipulations they put in with this upcoming year, if you're going to participate in their vehicle program, you have to participate in their property program. So if we opted not to take this policy, then we would also have to find a new carrier for all of our inland marine, public works equipment, and all of our vehicles.
We are trying to get a quote from this other carrier for our vehicles, so that we can try to have something next week, so that we can compare the full package to the full package. I know they're working on it, I don't know if they'll be able to get together.
We've sent them all the information on that too, so they're working on that one. But on the property insurance, basically, these are the two proposals that we have. And our property starts December first, so, you know, we have to move fairly quickly on that.
So it's going to have to be on the next meeting?
Yeah, it'll be on the twenty-eighth.
So would that include our safety program as well?
Yes, ACCA, Harding doesn't, he's not affiliated with it. Safety program through the workers' comp, that's through ACCA.
That would not change, though, would it?
No.
That wouldn't find our vehicles.
Not, not a none to that, that, the cost for that program.
The process that we're hearing from them is, after they get a few years of activity, then they can start even further reducing the rates due to all the, all the counties that participate in it. So, you know, we get a, a good savings through the workers' comp insurance through them, and this was, when the insurance discussion came up on this earlier in the year, the thought process was it will be administered in a similar fashion. Now, keep in mind, all of our inland marine equipment and all of our vehicles is through Meadowbrook now, would, that would actually be switching over to ACCA, but Meadowbrook would still be administering the work. So we would actually be paying ACCA, but the same company we've used for years and years for all of this equipment would still be handling the administration.
ACCA just becomes a broker for-
Like an umbrella policy.
But you said there is another comparison?
Well, we hope to have something by Monday. We've got a kind of a difficult decision, because when we choose, when we make this choice, we're choosing an all or nothing for our, for our property and our motor vehicles, which is why I wanted to try to have that information next week. So the local group that holds our insurance now is working to get that information together, and is going to try to have that for us next Monday, so that we can make, again, a full apples-to-apples comparison. If we choose to stay local with our property, that means in three months, we're going to have to start, we're going to have to have an alternative for our vehicle coverage, because that's when our vehicle coverage comes up. If we choose to go with ACCA, then the, you know, things will maintain the same. But again, to make a decision, I really would like to have the full comparison for both.
Yeah, I would really like to keep as much money local as possible, but that's a big difference.
Now, looking over some of this here, I mean, how do they assess these values on like a paved walking trail?
Assess the values?
Mm-hmm, you know, I just, looking over different things there.
Be a good question for our, for our agent area, yeah. I'm not sure exactly how, we've looked at the numbers over the past, we've tried to pull down some of those numbers in the past on the coverages, they are very particular. Now, is that the ACCA the one you're looking at?
Right.
I'm not sure.
Okay, you're twenty out of five, you have a paved walking trail.
There's like some on the city, in the later.
I would say it'd be based on what it costs to repair it, it would be something like that, yeah, just like repairing a car, what your parts would cost, or labor and all that, just kind of estimate on that, on average.
I think the way the charmer section we had, it was a-
Is it full replacement?
Size.
Yeah, that's a thought. And we need to check that on our insurance, too, what, with vehicles, if we change, what kind of coverage it is, because, you know, personally, your insurance is different.
Right.
What kind of coverage it is.
Yeah, we'd be looking at, full coverage is what we're looking at, I think, either way, that's what we have currently for most of our vehicles.
And then we're looking at the acquisition of the county properties, too.
Self insurance. I'm just concerned about that, because, I mean, that's going to be a worry entirely, I mean, it ain't like all of them will be legal, have a fender bled, and how they came about these figures, though.
Yeah, I think, like I said, I believe this is replacement cost, and where they come up with replacement cost. We've questioned that on the, with our current, again, last year, I think it was, we got some of those covered before, now, if I'm correct.
Yeah, well, what we had, you know, when we looked at it, we had some buildings that were, were at too high of a value, we felt. And then, so what we did, we went through each particular one, we had, you recall the building we tore down over here that was just a junk building? It was insured for like a million dollars previously. So I was a little concerned that we had not, you know, corrected that figure, and a little, little concerned that our agent had pointed that out. But anyway, that year, we went through all the buildings, and we found some that was overinsured, and then we found situations where our Marina, the docks at the Marinas was underinsured. So it was for us to go through everything at that, at that time, and then we got the Marinas brought up to the standard they should be, and we got several of the other buildings dropped down considerably. The way they'll do it is, it will go up a certain percentage each year usually. Well, if you'll recall, the building that we owned at Hollywood, it was one of the ones that was insured at a large amount of money. And we got with Mr. Rogers, Dr. Rogers, on that one, and the newer evaluation on that one, and got that one reduced down some. But, so all the figures in here are fairly recent, as far as actually going and looking at all the buildings and all the different structures that are there, and seeing that they're, you know-
That's what I wondered, because I go through this basically every year, with equipment, trucks and stuff on the highway, and, you know, it's, the value's going to go down, are you going to replace this and that? A lot of times, if you don't go back, that agent, he's not going to take it off his books a lot of times, you know?
Well, you know, probably more so the property stuff, when you, when you get into all of our equipment deals, I think they all have a five thousand dollar deductible on all of those. And then they have a depreciation schedule that they work off of, and like those public trucks, we're usually replacing them every year, too, so. public trucks, we're usually replacing them every year or two, so it's a, and again, you're welcome to look through the insurance books about this thing in there, if you'd like to spin it after you even go through, but it's, it's a, there's a lot of information in there, a lot of good information, and like I say, you're welcome to, to go through that at any time. But the main point I wanted to make is that we, we did do a hard look at every property that's on the county's books. It wasn't last year, it was here for last, it was one, one of the two, but we actually did go through every individual piece of property at that time, and brought our premium down some. I mean, property insurance is fairly inexpensive when you look at the value of your insurance and what it's costing you, but we still were able to bring, bring them down a little bit that year.
Any other questions or comments at this time? We'll place this on the agenda for next Monday, and hopefully have a different observation at that point.